It is Monday, July 25. This is a school board workshop agenda. The time is now 2:01. The purpose of this agenda today, the workshop, is agenda review of the July 26, 2022 regular school board meeting, the creating competitive compensation, employee benefits, and proximity plan updates. And I am going to go ahead and turn this over to Dr. Bernier for the agenda review.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had several questions come in regarding the agenda, first of which is on E2, the approval of the contract for professional services with Gray Robinson, PA. The question was, from the board member, please advise why this did not have to go out to bid. Professional services, and this is what this is, professional services contracts are exempt from competitive bid per Florida Department of Education Rule 6A 1.012. The legal department reviewed the contract, though, that was provided by Gray Robinson in the scope of services, and made sure that the bid was exempt per the DOE rule as well as approved to form. The district, however, before moving forward with this recommendation, and I told you in your one-on-ones, we applied due diligence by reviewing contracts from three different companies, Gray Robinson, Capital Strategies, and Legucina. We did that in order to ensure that we were getting the best cost for services, and we believe that Gray Robinson was the appropriate recommendation, and that's why it's on the board.
Thank you. That question came from Ms. Giovannielli. It was the first one.
So really, for me, it was just about being transparent in the process, and for the public to be aware of how we arrived at Gray Robinson. Thank you.
I love the fact that you're always looking out for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other questions regarding that? CNN, Dr. Bernier, please.
The next question was specifically about item G3, the approval of the memorandum. I'm going to try this again.
Miranda?
It is the consent after academic services, G3, approval of the memorandum for understanding with urban strategies. The question was about how this would work, and is it only exclusive to the Dunbar Community School, or can anyone attend? The short end. I'll get the next one last. So I'm going in the order that I was provided. No, it's not only exclusive to the Dunbar community. It is open to other individuals. How is this going to be advertised to the community so that we can know? We are maximizing the program to the benefit of the community. This is not a new initiative. It is offering the opportunity to take GED and ESOL classes at Southwood Village Residence to the Dunbar, and they can take those classes at the Dunbar community. There is already an extensive list of people looking to access these services. However, we can do some additional work with our communications office to ensure that we get even a greater word out, to make sure people know that there's an opportunity here for both of those programs. In terms of a quick action plan, what additional staff are we hiring? You should think of it as a targeted marketing campaign already offered for the progress and for products and services that we have. We already have adult education staff members who have been assigned to this particular program, and we know that we can absorb the numbers that we expect. If we went over the top, then we'd work with Rita Davis, who's the Director of Adult and Career Education, to make some changes. Finally, what additional support will be put in place to support the staff and the growth? Adult education is currently situated in a scalable supply and demand education model, meaning they really only, they have dollars to scale up or scale down depending on enrollment. We have a pool of part-time employees who are ready to be placed in instructor support roles when the time and demands increase. To tuition also helps support this model, as well as the retention of adult students in class. Sometimes this can be referred to as having a little bit of skin in the game. By having a little bit of a fee makes people a little more accountable to coming to the classes when they're off.
And thank you. For me, that was just, it was just to talk about it, and because a lot of people don't, you know, aren't really aware of it, and I just want to make sure that, you know, it's a service that we have, and, you know, and although I'm not a big fan of GEDs, but it's an option, and I like options for our community.
Yeah, and then also too, Ms. Giovannielli, if you remember, Urban Strategy was part of the grant that the Housing Authority received.
Yeah, it is.
For the $30 million, and that was part of our, the last MOU that we filled out to, to make sure that that took place there on that facility. So thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about it. You know, we don't talk enough, we don't tell our story enough, and this is part of our story, and it's really important, because it's, it's helping beyond, it's helping beyond the children, this is parents as well, and so forth, and so, you know, members of the community. So thank you.
And that's a great partnership. So yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Dr. Bernier?
The next item is H4, approval to renew ITB number B207396JC, which is Custodial Tools for the District Warehouse Operations, DWO. Again, the board member asked, please advise what is housed in the warehouse. This response comes from Susan Millay, the Executive Director for Business Services. And I do appreciate these questions, because they make your superintendent learn a lot as well. The District Warehouse on Canal Street is one of multiple district warehouses that support bulk purchasing for maintenance, transportation, print services, and schools. The Canal Street District Warehouse, DWO, stocks more than 600 items to be used by schools. Types of items stocked include cafeteria disposable items, custodial supplies, clinic supplies, paper products, and classroom and office supplies. Thus, District, the warehouse is located at 3308 Canal Street in Fort Myers. And in terms of the employees, who is their direct supervisor? Rebecca Rash is the District's, is the direct supervisor for 10 additional warehouse team members and the warehouse operations.
Thank you.
Ms. Bernier?
I just wanted to talk about, not talk about it, but I just wanted, you know, we're housing a lot of, it's not, it's not just the custodial tools, really, is what I was getting at. Thank you.
Okay. Ms., go ahead, Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah, I, I sent in a question on G18, the collegiate academy programs, and it's not on this list.
Yeah, I didn't see the other one on there either.
Do you have that one? You're already at H.
I did not, I do not have those in my responses. I did forward the questions you brought to me. You sent them to me specifically. I sent them to Ms. Japer. I will have them work on those as we speak. I imagine there may have been a clerical error. If not, I will get you the answers ASAP.
Okay, are we going to have an opportunity to discuss?
Yes, ma'am.
The answers as well? And you have the question? Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the next item, with respect to the fact that we still have two more items to cover under G, consent operations, approval to reject the ITN number N27, N227, 421DO, fuel pump maintenance and repair. Can you please explain our policy and our reason for the rejection? The school board policy defines the authority of purchasing and bidding, and it states any solicitation that clearly states, any solicitude shall clearly state that the board can reserve the right to reject any and all responses. The board retains the right to accept or reject any and all responses that are in the best interest of the district or as otherwise provided by law. Policy includes the authority to reject all bids in the event the responses do not meet the district needs. The district does not decide to proceed with a contract award, and we can also reject for any other reasons deemed to be in the district's best interest. The ITN included the required statement that authorizes the board to reject responses. Due to the aging equipment, fuel pump maintenance has been increasing. For the first time, costs are anticipated to extend and exceed over $50,000 annually, so a solicitation was prepared for fuel pump maintenance and repair services. After the ITN was published, two responses were received. One was responsive to the requirements, and one was not. The non-responsive proposal was missing several key pieces of information, including pricing, and therefore could not be considered. The evaluation committee decided to reject all proposals and rebid based upon the following. The responsive proposer only scored a 60 out of the possibly 100 points. The responsive proposer's rates are higher than what we've paid for recent fuel pump maintenance and repair services. The high cost may be due to the fact that the vendor is not local, and the cost included travel expenses. Based upon the high cost of just one responsive proposal, it was recommended to reject all proposals and issue a new solicitation. That's the response from Susan. Susan Millay and I had a number of conversations related to this. This is for important fuel pump work that we have to have in place for hurricane season, which allows our, in cases of emergency, other emergency vehicles to fill up at our fuel, our fuel pumps. We are having problems with maintenance, and we are rejecting this bid specifically, because while some of these individuals have done work for our district before, they were doing it at a much lower price, and we really feel that just with one responsive and the cost of these services, we can be a better steward of the taxpayer's dollar by going out and getting more competitive bids, including a local company to do this work.
Can I ask a question on that? When you just made a statement about, so, other local, who else would use that, and then we charge them back on that for, in case of a hurricane, and?
Primarily it's for emergency services, and yes, there is a chargeback for the fuel services. Yes, ma'am. They don't get the fuel for free.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, we've had several problems with just not getting enough response to our bids, and I perfectly understand why this one had to be rejected, considering that explanation. But what I'm wondering is, what kinds of things will be done differently in putting out the bid for another, a second time, that will hopefully bring in more responses?
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Ms. Vaughn, it's an excellent question. We've already started some of that work specifically around our contract bids. We have not only advertised locally, which we are required to do in our local newspaper, and also in professional journals, but we've begun to engage with other members of the community, specifically representing all members of the community, in order to get them in understanding that a bid is now out on the street. I will tell you that one of the reasons why bids are tough to come by these days is the people doing this type of work are fully engaged in the work that they do, trying to find the additional time to compete for a bid, and then finding the time to actually complete the work, is part of our problem right now. Vendors have a lot of work on their hands already, and they're having trouble finding time at this point for additional clients.
Yeah, and I was wondering, you know, across the state, I imagine, across the nation, it's difficult to get competent help, and if that's, it sounds like that's playing into it as well. So, okay, as long as, if it doesn't work the first time, we do some changes the second time to get a, hopefully, better response.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Dr. Bernier?
So, the next question revolves around K7, approval to piggyback the city of O'Donnell, Texas, RFP OD 32320, Demographic Services. Why is this a piggy, the question is, why is this a piggyback contract when we have our own contract, question mark? Please provide the information regarding the piggyback contracts in our contract we have with Davis. Also, as mentioned, redistricting, but in the past, that, we've had that in the past, and that should not come into play, and please advise what the total expenditure paid to Davis is to date, and where the plan is, where there is a plan for the need for Davis Demographics. My apologies. The district ITM number N197367ES is for the proximity student enrollment district plan. As you're aware, you will get an update later today, and then more information forthcoming regarding what we have to do to move forward with the student proximity plan and deciding things about our student enrollment process. This piggyback contract was initiated with Davis Demographics to address four needs not covered in the district's ITN. Those four needs are, one, long-term enrollment projections going out 10 years, district-wide maturation, which is a build-out study. So as the, as the district becomes more mature, what does our build-out process look like? We also need miscellaneous GIS services to replace the district's loss of dedicated GIS technician, which we have not been able to replace. And finally, we asking for redistricting options for the board. Copies of the requested contracts can be provided. The total expenditures to date for Davis Demographics, for the proximity plan contract, $224,000 out of the $280,000, and the piggyback contract is $112,000 out of a potential $130,000.
Ms. Kittens?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around a piggyback for services such as that. I mean, I understand piggybacks for, you know, like, gas, or food, or something like that. I'm not sure I totally understand how, and I, I think I heard you just say, Superintendent, though, that doing it this way, we're saving almost $100,000 or a certain amount. So, I mean, I, I'm not sure, when you say piggybacking, they're going to be doing one thing for a school somewhere else, and, I mean, a district somewhere else, and a different thing for us. So, that's what I'm trying to figure out, how is it a?
Well, I want to be clear, I don't believe I say, believe that we saved $100,000. I don't remember saying that.
You did say that it was 200 or something, and then it was 1 something, if we did the piggyback.
Out of the amount, and, out of the, yes. There's a difference in total cost if we piggyback on the contract. The other thing is, the need for these services are immediate. Having discussed all, with all of you, and for the public's consumption, I've discussed all of you in one-on-ones regarding moving forward, we are, and the next question is about transportation. We are in a bit of a crisis in our transportation department, based on how we assign our children to schools. We need to take the proximity work that unfortunately was started and well underway prior to my arrival, which was interrupted by COVID. So we needed to move quickly to get back with Davis Demographics, to contract with them in areas that we did not have a current contract. That's why we're using a piggyback process.
Okay, so I, I mean, I can understand it with, like, the GIS, because everyone's having difficulty finding GIS employees, so I could see we're piggybacking and using the same person or persons for two different districts, but anyway, that's fine. I'll talk with you later.
Ms., Patricia, and then Ms. Giovannielli.
And then, in terms of the, the potential need for redistricting services, I believe that we have a workshop topic that was discussed by Ms. Vaughn earlier, about whether we want to move to seven single-member districts. So that's why we could potentially need redistricting MAP services from Davis, as included in this, correct?
Wasn't an area, wasn't an area that we considered when contracting with Davis through this piggyback. We were considering redistricting options specifically related to proximity student enrollment, not seven board members.
Right. So, so it says, "In option for board member area redistricting at the board's request."
At the board's request. Yes, ma'am.
And then, Mr. Giovannielli, please.
Well, so I'm a little confused. First of all, thank you for the information, because it's very helpful. I thought we spent, initially, when we hired Davis, that we spent $500,000 initially. That's why I don't think the, I think this may be pertaining to this contract, maybe. Am I confused on that?
Ma'am, I would have to get, I would have to get back to you on that. Those contracts were $500,000 prior to my appointment.
Correct. Okay. I was just curious on what we've spent so far on them, and, and to piggyback, was it just quicker to expedite versus having our own contract, I guess?
Well, we'd have to go out for RFP. We'd have to go out for an ITN or RFQ in order to get these services, versus finding a piggyback bid allowed us to move forward so that we could move the proximity plan, because we'd like to be back in front of you in January with some recommendations for the following school year of how we can better assign our children to school so we can get them to school on time.
Thank you. No, it's important, the proximity plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. B.
K dot nine is approval of the designated school bus routes for the 2223 school year. The question is, $58,721,000, that's a lot of money. Please, please advise how many buses and employees are on the road this new school year as compared to last? And then there's several questions, more or less. What is our shortage? How many drivers did we lose, and how many did we hire? If we have less buses and more students on the bus, how safe is this for our students? Would this be a safety issue related to overcrowded busing? What do we think the additional fuel cost will be compared to from, as, as we compare it to last year? Did we lock in any fuel contracts that we have done in the past? Have we made the moves to secure fuel at a reasonable price? Have we looked into the cost of privatizing transportation and the possible cost savings, and what those could be? And are we looking at all options? So, we are currently, there's a need for 729 positions, and we have filled 595 of them. That leaves us 134 drivers short. So that's the question A. Question B, we are 31 drivers short of what we ended with last year. We've hired 22 drivers since the beginning of June. C, safety is always our primary responsibility and our priority. Our buses will not operate unless every student has a seat, and we can do that in a safe and consistent manner. Two biggest factors in calculating fuel costs are the price of fuel and the miles driven per day. Fuel prices change daily. Currently, prices are down from the June average of $4.96 per gallon. We have, no, at this point, we have looked into joining a fuel consortium, but at this time, we have not joined. That area and that aspect of contractual relationship with other districts for fuel is something we are researching. We have researched outsourcing our foster students and our project access students. The problem, the concern with that was it became cost prohibitive. For 245,000, 245 students, the initial feedback regarding privately, privately transporting those individuals was over $3 million. So we have looked into outsourcing services, changing bell times, and recruiting other district employees to drive. And so those are what we're looking at in terms of additional options, and we are working very diligently to get some changes made to the proximity plan, which should be able to help us going into the 2324 school year. I know other school districts have gone into privatizing transportation, and maybe this is something we should look into, if we are failing our staff by the inability to pay them competitively, and failing our students and families if we aren't able to transport them safely, timely, or even at all. I have received many calls this year, but the bus never came. That's a question that we hear often, and this must be addressed. So we really do need to look at privatization at a deeper level. I know there's discussion around the proximity plan, and you'll get more about it today to help offset transportation costs, but that does not address the immediate problems of culture, understaffing, overworked, and underpaid, which has led to some of our bus We are, we are very concerned going into this year that we can get our students to school on time, and in a manner that's safe. Again, the most important aspect of moving forward will be the safety of our students in securing a safe route to school, but that may come at the expense of what time they arrive, based upon our current staffing conditions. Madam Chair?
That's a lot to take down for getting these kids to school, that school's getting ready to start.
Best to Vaughn.
Ms. Vaughn?
Dr. Brenier, well before you, you were here, probably at least a year, at least a year ago, one of the topics on the table was taking some people that already worked for the district that had kinds of driving, driver's licenses that the bus drivers have, and perhaps combining a job, obviously, the morning runs start a lot earlier than the time in for people, let's just say in warehouse, maintenance, somewhere like that. It was something that would obviously have to really be carefully worked out with Spalk and how to, how to do that, but we did have a fairly robust, robust conversation about that. To your knowledge, has anything been done on that? Have we explored that?
I know there has been some exploration, but I am not at this time prepared to read into the record and answer to that question because I want to confirm with several individuals in the audience. I'd want to confirm with Mr. Dotick, specifically regarding Spalk and some of the, what I understand to be some of the challenges in getting to an agreement where that would have been permissible. And also, I want to make sure with Roger Lloyd as well to get his perspective.
Yeah, and just, it was, I know, well over a year ago, we had a meeting and we were exploring, you know, of course, we had the same kinds of difficulties in staff shortages. So apparently, it's not anything that's being done right now, or you'd be aware of it, and I just never heard a report on why that wouldn't work or, you know, the, the challenges, let's say, in exploring something like that. Never heard anything definitively reported.
Again, an excellent question. I think first and foremost, it's not a matter of it wouldn't work. I think there are always solutions, there are always win-wins in this world, but we have to be cognizant of contractual and collective bargaining agreements that are in place and make sure we're working through the proper channels to try to create some of these avenues where people could have two different jobs or maybe have stopped driving a bus, but now is a kindergarten teacher. And so they're covered under the TALC agreement, but they'd like to, they still have their CDL license. And I would make, you know, those types of crossovers have to be negotiated and we have to reach agreement with our two bargaining units. But I would encourage anybody with a CDL that has one in their pocket right now that is valid to get in touch with Roger Lloyd or get in touch with Robert Dotick because we need additional bus drivers going into this school year.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Brenier?
Going back to parts of the agenda, G18, this was the approval to renew the agreement and articulated our acceleration plan for college-level instruction for Benita Springs High School, Gateway High School Collegiate Academy programs with Florida Gulf Coast University. There are a lot of things that need to be done in order to make this work. I think one of the questions specifically was about the seven-period day and does this complicate a schedule for students who take one or more classes on their high school campuses? The seven-period day, to some extent, actually simplifies the scheduling of Collegiate Academy students because there's no longer an odd-even day of consideration as all the courses are offered daily. However, we've heard from students, when any, and those of you with the background and, as parents or as just board members, you know that in scheduling a student, there are always choices that have to be made. You know, it's almost impossible for a child to have AP Calc, be dual-enrolled at FSW or FGCU, get the fourth level of painting, you know, it just, and then also perform in marching band, which you have to sit down with young people and have a discussion with, with their counselors, get information regarding what is it they're trying to accomplish and what, what interests them the most in making sure we're doing that. So in some ways, the seven-period day has simplified the scheduling, but also it's, it has asked our children and our families to prioritize what they really want to get from their K-12 experience. There was a question. Val, I'm sorry, you want me to go on to the next question or do you want to stop there?
I don't have, I don't know what you're reading because I don't have what you're reading. So, continue, please.
So, the second question regarding the Collegiate Academy, are there any provisions for students who qualify and who wish to be in the program but do not have access to personal transportation to Gulf Coast University's campus? The Collegiate Academy offers the general core academic classes on the high school campus. Therefore, during the senior year, that Collegiate Academy student may schedule some Gulf Coast courses on the Gulf Coast, Gulf Coast campus that would necessitate transportation considerations. While it's rare that a student has personal transportation challenge, on the few occasions this has occurred, the high school does work with Florida Gulf Coast University on a transportation plan, or Florida Gulf Coast University offers a virtual learning lab for that course, so the student may take the course, joining virtually from the high school campus. So generally, the general education courses for the AA are actually held on the high school campus, which at one point eliminates the transportation concern. If the student is determined to go to Florida Gulf Coast University, there is some articulation between both the university and the school district to try to arrange for some form of transportation plan. We are clearly no longer able to do that with our own school buses from the previous answers to the transportation questions.
If I may, I'd like to address what motivated that question. On, in the area of personal, you know, a lot of our juniors and seniors, of course, this would be mostly seniors, although some juniors do, I imagine, many have personal transportation, but probably if you, and I'm just guessing, educated guess here, if you look at those students that have their own personal transportation, because it's expensive to have a car and to operate a car, it's, it's going to be more like middle-class students and probably less likely to be some of our students that aren't as, you know, the families aren't as, as well off. So that, that was one thing. The other thing is, yeah, I'm well aware of how some of these courses can be taught on the campus, but I think I read in, it's been a few days, but in the articulation in that agreement, that unless there are six students, we're not going to make a class for two kids. So what, what I'm seeing here is, this is a wonderful, wonderful program for students. I mean, the money that can be saved, but looking at this one aspect, to me, it's an advantage to the students who come from families that are a little, that are situated financially. Does that make sense? I mean, and you can't have all the, I mean, you have to have a teacher on the campus to, who's certified to teach, who's approved by FGCU. I went through that years ago, and then my school decided, no, we're not, we're just going to send them, it was actually FSW instead. So it has to be a teacher like that. And the reason I talked about the seven-period day is if you do have teachers on campus that are teaching this, and they're teaching on the seven-period day, I guess, you know, a typical college class is what, an hour? So I guess they'd have to split the normal hour into, you know, class on Monday and the same continuation lesson on Tuesday, but, but then aren't the college classes still like Monday, Wednesday? I just, I see a lot of complicated factors in here, and I do understand about the seven-period day, and you're right, it just has to be worked out. But the thing is, I started thinking about it that bothered me even more was the fact that it may, this may be giving an advantage to the students that come from families that can afford to get them this kind of transportation. I mean, does that make sense? Or I'm curious what, what the answer, and I'm curious if this hasn't been brought up before as an issue with this. And I'm not, I love the program, but it's something that popped in my head as I was looking at it.
So the concern clearly is valued by your superintendent sitting just down the dais from you.
Right.
It's valued by the staff as well.
Right.
We would like as much equity as possible in our programs in order to provide to our students, but since the vast majority of our students are actually enrolled while on campus, we feel like that's been mitigated. Where transportation is required because they need to take the course at the university, they can't transport themselves. And when the case is where we can't, we believe that for the most part, and I will have to get with Dr. Spiro, but for the most part, we've been able to mitigate through those challenges by giving that child an online version of that course so that they can, they can still gain access without having to leave the campus. So I, what, what Dr. Spiro and the rest of the academic service is saying is that, yes, in a perfect world, everybody who wanted to go to FGCU could get in their car or a form of, the school district of Lee County Transportation, and we've provided that opportunity. Currently, we don't have that. Keep that in mind as we talk about proximity plan today because freeing up routes and transportation routes and bus drivers to maybe provide some of that long-term is a possibility if we can find a manner and means by which to get the students we currently have enrolled to school on time.
Yeah, and I don't want to belabor it, but having had the experience of having students, senior students when I taught at Estero that were taking college courses online, it worked for some of them, but anybody in education knows that not all students do well with the distance learning, the remote learning like that.
Agreed completely, but at just about every university in the state, car...
Now, now they are, exactly.
...require an online course in order to be able to graduate.
Yeah.
So it's important for us to give our students the opportunity. If they're prepared for it, if they're not, then we need to seek those other solutions where they can take it on class.
Okay.
On campus.
Okay. And...
So one of the final questions here was our academy enrolled students, those students enrolled in the Collegiate Academy, are they eligible to participate in band athletics and clubs and organizations? And the short answer to that question is yes. The academy students can enjoy all of the extracurricular opportunities that are afforded to all students, and that is partially due to the fact that they are taking the coursework on campus and are not transporting back and forth.
Yeah, and I put in brackets a couple things. In the other, the next one, which was, I guess, 19, there is actually a statement in each of them, the first one, that the student's own transportation is required, and then in that other, in the, this one about extracurricular, there is a statement that says they're allowed to. So to me, looking to the future, it might be helpful to have both agreements have specific statements like G19 does so that it's clearer. And that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, those are the questions that I had for Agenda Review.
Okay, great, thank you. Ms. Kittens?
May I ask something that I did not get an opportunity to turn in? On K... Second, I think it's K1 about the portables for Benita Springs Elementary School. I know that previously, they had several that were not set up, per se. Is this additional or is this just making sure that the ones that are there are functioning?
I'm going to need member of staff. I do not, I have enough information in my brain to potentially answer that question, but I want to make sure we're doing it correctly. So I know that both Scott and Scott, Rick and Barker and Frederick have been involved in this, specifically the Benita Springs portables. I just want to make sure that they would be prepared to come down and talk a little bit about that particular agenda item. Scott's got it.
Dr. Brenier, the portables and the agenda items are our final payment. We added four portables that were leased to support the administration and the clinic areas for that school until such a point as we can get back in with the structural reworking of the building. There were two or three existing portables that he had used for other purposes. I can't speak to what that, that is, though.
No, that's fine. I knew that they did have some that were, that were there but not being used at the time, and I was just wondering were these additional, and so you answered it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. B, that was it, okay.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. So moving right along then, thank you for that. There's no other questions regarding the Agenda Review. We will proceed with the proximity plan update, and that will be whoever's coming up, just, if you have just introduced, Dr. Lloyd, when you get up here, if you all will just introduce yourself, whoever will be speaking, please.
So while they're making their way up, Madam Chair, if I could, Adam Malloy and Irma Lancaster, Roger Lloyd, and other people who will be introducing, Saretta Ralph will be introducing themselves momentarily. As you know, we have, we have been working with a school assignment process that was developed a long time ago, and it believes in some critical factors that I think are worth holding on to, one of them being the fact that our community believes in choice as it relates to their school districts. And I believe that you can provide choice up to a certain level, but at some point, we have to go out and engage with the community regarding the balance between choice, on-time percentages regarding getting the children to school on time, and making some determinations about what we're seeing a lot of in our own email accounts as you transfer information to me over the last several weeks. Quote-unquote, "I just moved into the area, I live across from a school, and I can't go to school there." It's, it's an eye-opening experience to move to Lee County from the aspect of some individuals who come in from the outside, who perceive that because they've purchased a home within proximity of a educational environment, that their young person would walk across the street. So this conversation began very early on, prior to me even interviewing with all of you, to try to understand our school assignment process, processes, our threes, our zones, and then how they're subdivided, and then how within those subdivisions of those zones, people have additional choice. And if they are lucky enough to be in Zone 2, they have all the choices within a zone for Zone 1, Zone 2, and Zone 3. I am here to tell you that this committee and this group has been working diligently to dig into this, but the time may have come for some of that choice to be more openly discussed with the public to bring a sense of recommendation to all of you in January. In other words, if you could imagine our boardroom with the screen over there with one Post-it note on it, I know I'm stealing from their presentation, and a set of Post-it notes going across the room to another one. This one is our current assignment process. It is maybe the, the most liberal one that I'm aware of in a district of our size. It really provides a vast amount of choice for our families, and I think our families and our students deserve that choice, but I think we have to also at some point transfer some of the financial burden and responsibility. If you come across the room over to the other screen, this would be the Post-it note that would get your new superintendent fired. What I mean by that is that would be the most egregious, most locked-down system you could possibly imagine, which would have no choice involved in it at all. Our goal, and you'll hear in the presentation today, our goal is to work somewhere with the community to...
stopped me in my driveway as I was getting into my car to talk about the student assignment system, and much of what you just said was reflected in that conversation. But more importantly, she praised you, Ms. Ralph, and I wanted you to hear that publicly. She received an email from you after 6:00 on Sunday, July 3, addressing some of her concerns. And for you to be that dedicated and that willing to give of your Sunday before the Fourth of July time to address concerns of constituents, I for one am very appreciative. I think this was an incredibly difficult year for your office because of the no waitlist thing and the growing and the capacity issues and all of that. And so I just wanted you to hear that as you come into this presentation, so maybe you feel a little bit better as you give the presentation, because you are appreciated. It's hard, but you're appreciated.
To Ms. Patrica's point, you know, this is, this is about us breaking some of that organizational inertia relative to one of these systems. We do have the proximity plan update for you guys today, so good afternoon. We're excited to be here and excited to be with some of the district dream team staff. Our agenda is simple. We're just going to go over and reconnect with some of the whys for this project, current timeline on our assignment system, adding in the work that's been done with Davis Demographics over the past two years, some of our current state, and we didn't go into all of our current state as that has been presented as it relates to, you know, school performance or student isolation. We're really going to get into the transportation and then the participation in our open enrollment process. Then we're going to talk a little bit about Dr. Bernier's continuum of options and why this is necessary for us to move forward, our community engagement plan, and then our draft timelines for 2023, 2024. The why is very simple, and this is something that's been asked a lot of the proximity team. Why are we endeavoring on such a large system change? Because we need to do better. We need to do better for our kids, our schools, and our community. When this assignment system was developed roughly about 20-plus years ago, we were a much different school district, right? We set out on certain goals, and we set out on a path of hopefully choice setting us up for success. And now we're here to, to reevaluate, to reconsider, and hopefully move in a better direction for our kids. So this is about students in schools and their success. We always try to tie everything back to how can we better set up the classroom in our schools for success, addressing some of the ineffective student assignment practices that leads to our transportation issues. We've all heard the anecdotes and seen the emails from parents and from community members, seeing bus after bus, traveling through one neighborhood at the same level. So I know that you guys are well aware of that, and I do see the emails that come across and that Ms. Ralph addresses in a very timely fashion. But we're hoping to address some of those, those practices as we move forward. One of the things that's really big, and we know is really big, and I know that was, was made worse by COVID, is just a reconnection between communities, neighborhoods, and their schools. Getting parents back engaged, getting parents and community members back engaged in the classroom, certainly that's something that proximity can assist in addressing. And then ultimately reinvesting some of those savings in the classroom. And so that's, that's a little bit about our why. Our timeline, I'm not going to go through the history lesson. I do want to draw your attention to 2005 to present. That is our current choice plan with geographic zones and subzones. Please remember that you can choose, rank, and attend, and be transported to a school in your zone and adjacent subzones. So if you live in subzone two of any of our west, south, and east, you are dealing with a large number of choices. I would say overwhelming. But we do see, if you were to circle geographically, we do see students attending schools all over our west, south, and east geographic zones. And I think that when we talk about participation in open enrollment, that's a big key factor. Like if we have a large number of our community members, our entering kindergartners that are not participating, they are then be, they are then being assigned all over to any open seats at any of the schools within their zone or subzone and adjacent subzone. I did add in there for the timeline, our work with Davis Demographics, that has been key in setting us up for success, both in terms of strategic clustering of schools, going to smaller zones. You might remember in August of last year, we did map four for Davis Demographics, reducing the average number of choices from around 11 to 12 to about four. We're still continuing in that work as we transition and as we go back out to the community. And, you know, all the work that is, that has been done really the past few months, taking a look at some of the continuum of options. Turning it over to Mr. Lloyd.
Good afternoon. As you can see from this slide, this is really just a status update. Some of the data actually was shared earlier this afternoon, and it's pretty telling because we took information from May, just seems like last week, during the last month of school. We went through there, and then we took the same information in July. We still need 729 bus drivers. That's what we need to get these kids to school safely and in a, in a timely manner. I know safety came up about the number of kids on the bus. Really, the safety issue is not on the buses. We, we won't operate those buses if kids don't have the seat. Really, the safety issue is leaving kids on the side of the road in the morning. That, that is the safety issue that we need to be concerned about. And as you look at the number of drivers, you know, 626, it was hard to believe that's where we were at, and now we're at 595. We have hired 22 additional drivers since June 1st. Quick math lesson, we've lost over 50. So retirement, resignations, different jobs. So you'll see the driver shortage there, 134. You'll see the news, they asked me about the routes. We have cut our routes, but in doing so, we've done that out of necessity. We're trying to make sure we have a plan to get all these kids to and from school. So we are cutting the routes. That doesn't change the need. I still need 729 drivers. I'm just cutting back the routes so we have a better chance of getting them to school in a fashion that's safe and timely. So we are continuing to cut routes. We're continuing. I had two drivers resign today, but I had three test to get their CDL. So it seems like we are treading water at this, this point in time. So you look at the daily routes, we have 69 open. I bring that up because if you look at the absenteeism rate of 10 to 12% for bus drivers across the nation, you take a look at 600 drivers, I'm going to have 60 out a day, and we don't have subs. Anybody who wants to work full-time is already hired full-time regular. So my staff most definitely has a daunting task in front of them. And I think where parents are going to be concerned and should be concerned, and Dr. Bernier brought this up, it's down there, 2,145 students late every day. Multiply that by 180 days, it's 386,000 kids that are late. So if you have academics that first period, that comes back, you know, a loss of instructional time. Now, there comes a point that logistically, we just can't get these kids to school on time. Now, as we go to the next slide, we want to talk about reinvestment. What does this, what does this look like? Transportation departments, their efficiency is based upon the percentage of their operating cost as compared to the total operating cost of a district. I would love to show you the 5.58 for 2021 because we've cut that down. But even at where it is right now, if you take a look at that 5.58%, if I can get it down to the state average of 4.13%, it's a nice little chart. Bottom line, what people want to see, that's $12.9 million.
How much?
$12.9 million if I can get it down to the state average. Now, if I can get it down to the 10 largest, that's over $20 million a year. And that's something we look at, and that most definitely is a daunting task. So this proximity plan absolutely, in any manner that we do, restriction, obviously we're going to go through, can't be full tilt, but any kind of restriction helps transportation.
Mr. Lloyd, Ms. Morgan had a question.
It's really more of a comment. The 10 largest Florida districts all have urban areas with public transportation, and the state average includes that. It is totally unrealistic for us to aspire to the 10 largest Florida districts because our, our situation is so entirely different. I just wanted to insert that, make sure everybody in the public especially understands that. We have limitations that, that nobody else has with respect to public transportation.
Thank you. Ms. Kittens?
Going back just one step, when you were talking about cutting routes, and I'm trying to wrap my head around if you don't get those other, you know, drivers that you need, and let's say you've got 50 and you need 60, do the 50 then drive more, drive further, drive longer?
All of the above. So what happens when I reduce a route? I might have a route that goes to South Fort Myers and then does Araymacy Page. Well, they finish up the Araymacy Page route at 4:20 in the afternoon. What I will do is then schedule them to do a middle school. They finish up close to Three Oaks Middle School. I just assign them Three Oaks Middle School to their route.
Okay.
That bus, if all the stars align and spring training and snowbirds and everything else, it's still going to be a half an hour late every single day. But by doing so, I'm reducing the number of drivers because we just don't have people. Now, when I cover a route, one bus that's missing at a school, and I cover it and I say the first six stops go on bus A, the next six, bus B, the next six on bus C, those kids will get home a little bit late. But what I have essentially done is I just made those five buses that much later to their second school. So it's a domino effect. So when you, you hear complaints, you're going to hear them from the middle school. They're the, they're the last tier, they're the fourth tier that we go to. So we kind of throw everybody at the first tier, at the high schools, and then it kind of builds up. So we try to reduce the number and have a plan for these buses that don't have a scheduled bus driver for.
Okay, I have one question and one suggestion. One question, if I am the driver that gets, you know, two extra stops, how are we compensating that?
Well, and that's with overtime. They, they definitely get through overtime, which is time and a half for that. So these routes that are built in, they're definitely getting compensated for it.
Okay. And as I'm sitting here listening, I can just see this visual picture, and I have been in when you're doing this, and just a thought, to do some type of a, a video presentation, a day in the life of, so that, because, because I don't think people really can grasp, Irma's looking at me like, oh, you're giving me work to do. Now, I mean, it's just a suggestion, but if people could see what that really, some people are just visual, and they don't have time or ability to decipher all of this written, but to show a quick video and to show all of the, you know, when, when we do this, this happens, I just, just throwing it out there.
Ms. Kittens, we, we did actually do a day in the life. We had our team out at 4:00 AM in the morning and followed the bus driver who did have to do multiple routes that day, all the way until sunset, followed him during his little lunch break. So we actually did do a video in the life of a bus driver, and we do continue to push that out. We'll be happy to include that in the board update for you.
Would you please, because then I would like to, to push it out in my social media.
Absolutely, thank you.
Because that was last year, right?
Yes.
You did that?
Yeah, I was close to the end of last year.
Yeah, I, I thought I remembered that. Ms. Vaughn?
It's an interesting idea, but let me suggest that you don't use it for recruitment purposes.
The video doesn't specifically talk about recruitment, it just says.
I realize.
The happiest of bus drivers.
You ain't getting anybody. Sorry to say.
I'm not to be a bus driver.
He had a great time, the entire 12 hours, whatever it was.
Shane did well.
Will you finish with your part?
I am, yes.
The idea of how we get where we are with our student enrollment, this is an example of just our kindergarten for the 2021 school year.
Sorry, Ms. Ralph, this, I just wanted to make sure that people understand that you're Ms. Ralph, who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Seretta Ralph. I'm the executive director for student enrollment. I'm the one that everyone emails when they don't get their school. So this is just a slide showing you for kindergarten. This is for open enrollment for 2021. This would have been the students that just finished kindergarten for this past school year. So the top bar graph is showing you the students that participated in open enrollment. That number is 3,735. Those students actually participated and rank ordered their school during January, February, and actually participated in the lottery that ran in March. The bottom bar graph are those students, as Dr. Bernier mentioned, came in after the lottery ran, and those are students, 2,835 probably didn't get the school most near their home. 2,835 students. They could have gotten one of the 17 schools all across that south zone, east zone, or west zone, for a total of 6,588 students in kindergarten this past school year. So that gives you an example of how many students we had in kindergarten for this past school year. The top bar is how many students participated in open enrollment. The bottom bar is how many students did not participate in open enrollment, or they came in and enrolled sometime during the year and likely did not get their first, second, or third choice school.
Thank you.
And certainly, I know her office and department is continuing to deal day by day with all of those students that are registering, you know, as we speak. So that's something that certainly we can address as a, as a system. So this is, and I got to give a shout out to Cindy. She's our, she was one of our last leaders and runs with the, with the proximity team. She came up with this great visual of the Post-it notes that Dr. Bernier was discussing with the least restrictive options on one side, that's our current state. You can see the, the student with multiple schools and multiple buses, and then on the far side, the most restrictive, and that would be our, a legit boundary system. Okay? You're assigned by address, and then you are transported based on that boundary, and that's it. So this is our continuing, a continuum of options, and we're hoping, we know as we go out in this community engagement and kind of restart, reignite our community engagement relative to the plan, we're hoping to, to get somewhere in the middle on a number of topics, based on the context in which we're in from a transportation side, in a context that we're in from an open enrollment side. Now, in terms of, you know, our.
Dr. Malloy, Ms. Vaughn has her hand up.
Vaughn?
Yeah. When, when this is being done, is there a separate bucket, so to speak, for students that have particular needs, ELL students, students that may only be served in certain schools? How does, how does this option system work with that group of kids?
So Ms. Vaughn, that's a great question. They'll certainly get to that within the presentation, but the short answer to your question is yes. There are specific students with IEPs, specific needs, specific programming options. We are not talking about the, those types of individual students. We're really looking at the larger picture of how we assign the vast majority of our students to the school system.
Right, but we, we have had emails with those kinds of things, so.
It's an excellent, it's an excellent point to get out into the ether and into the conversation, that those individuals who have specific needs and specific programs are not part of. students that may only be served in certain schools? How does this option system work with that group of kids?
So Ms. Vaughn, that's a great question. They'll certainly get to that within the presentation, but the short answer to your question is yes. There are specific students with IEPs, specific needs, specific programming options. We are not talking about the, those types of individual students. We're really looking at the larger picture of how we assign the vast majority of our students to the school system.
Right, but we have had emails with those kinds of things, so.
It's an excellent, it's an excellent point to get out into the ether and into the conversation, that those individuals who have specific needs and specific programs are not part of this larger picture of how we assign children to our schools.
Separate.
They're in a separate category, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Gittens?
Mr. Malloy, Dr. Malloy, sorry. You did, you mentioned about getting back out into the community and all that. And may I suggest too, we had a very vibrant committee of community individuals that were very invested in helping to solve this problem. And are we looking to reengage them at some point?
Again, Ms. Gittens, if we could be permissible to allow the team to run through the PowerPoint, I think you'll have a lot of those questions answered. But the first and most important answer to you is yes. You specifically had that conversation with me in a one-on-one. I've already conveyed to the committee to make sure that we're aware of some of those individuals who participated in this work prior to, to be called upon again to help serve as we engage with the community for more updated input as to how we could proceed.
Thank you.
So we'll hold all the questions until after you finish the presentation. How's that?
Great.
Okay.
So this is our current system, least restrictive, you guys are aware. You know, really, I see this as a family and a community's first entrance and introduction really to our school district. It can be a bit overwhelming. And, you know, having to rank myself for my children, having to rank 12 schools, I felt somewhat guilty not doing the right preparation or having to call schools and say, hey, what should I consider? You know, it's, it is a bit of a task, I think, for parents. You know, students may choose any school in their subzone and adjacent subzone and transportation is provided across the zone to students well beyond the two-mile walk zone. You know, a lot of times we talk about transportation inefficiencies, but we need to remember that this is a student assignment system that is creating those inefficiencies, right? All students guaranteed to remain in school until they move to the next school level. So that's our current state. It is somewhat unique and singular among the 67 counties in Florida and among the nation in terms of, in terms of the amount of choice that is provided to families. On the far side, we have the most restrictive. Dr. Bernier jokingly mentioned that this is perhaps a job jeopardizer in terms of students being assigned to school based just on their residential address and then transportation provided to the assigned school and that's it in the boundary, right? And when boundaries change, no students are grandfathered. Whether this is just implemented right away, there's a large amount of displacement. But yeah, transportation is strictly addressed here by doing one address, one school, okay? Now, how we're going to, we talked a little bit about, you know, reengaging the community. We did well over, you know, 70 community presentations. The community was overall very supportive of our need to address the system and to improve the student assignment system. We are going to go back out with a framework, certainly along that continuum, that elementary and middle school students will be first assigned to school based on their residential address and then may choose to enter a lottery to attend another school in zone. And we're going to talk a little bit about what that in-zone means. But if you're unhappy with your initial assignment, which would address the participation in open enrollment because you'd automatically be assigned, then you can enter either a waiver process or a lottery process in-zone. And that in-zone could be current subzones or they could be the MAP 4 Davis zones that were created where you would still have on average three to four choices. Transportation being provided to the assigned school for students outside of the two-mile walk zone and some students may be grandfathered. And really, when we go back out and we're taking feedback, processing feedback, analyzing feedback, the grandfathering and the transportation, I think, are going to be key. Who is going to be grandfathered at what grades? And then who is attached to them, whether sibling or other? Just, our team really wanted just to make sure that, you know, that choice was always going to be present. Per Florida House Bill 7029, choice will remain, right? Choice will always remain. Even if you went to a strict boundary system, per the state statute, you would have a choice as long as capacity allowed, right? And that will remain current. In terms of our zone options, you guys, you remember proximity plan MAP 4, which drastically reduced the size of the subzones, going from like three in each geographic area to a number. We had the current subzones as well for elementary schools. And then for the middle schools, we could also kind of tether the current subzones and then have Davis as part of their, I guess, next step would be middle schools zoning. Some preliminary work has been done with the, with Davis demographics. This is actually their bread and butter, is creating strategic, you know, boundaries that take a look at a number of factors when putting, you know, students close together. So that is not a, that's not a concern. You know, is creating those, you know, those new, I guess, residential boundaries with the, whatever we decide with the community, those, you know, those zone options. You know, feedback is vital. We know how important it is. There is never enough that can be done for community engagement. There can only be more. We know that that is an issue that we face. And the topics that we're really looking back on with the community for the student assignment plan is, you know, which zones are preferred along the continuum? Are we going to use the current subzones or the Davis demographic zones? What level of transportation, residential assignment only? Or if they choose to go outside of their residential assignment, would transportation be provided then? The big question, and really in the first round of community engagement, is will my current assignment be affected and will you honor that as a school district? Will you honor that and allow my child to remain in the school? You know, we have this vested interest. You know, I can imagine going home and telling my wife, well, our kids are not going to be at the school that they've been at for three to four years. So that is, that's something that we anticipate, you know, which students will be grandfathered? No students, all students, rising students? And then will transportation be provided? So that's something big that I think that the, that leadership has considered and has gone through a number of options. I try to tell myself that these changes are not, they're not easy, but we have to, we have to make them and we have to have those conversations with the community about what that means for them. Going back to a historical reference, in the 90s, when they were doing boundary changes almost every year to try to meet the court order, you know, on average, I think elementary school students in Lee County changed elementary schools two to three times. And I, growing up in that, you know, in that period, was one of them. And so that was kind of a mark in the history, but that's certainly something that can present a lot of challenges at the, at the board level. Turn it over to Ms. Lancaster.
Irma Lancaster, Director of Communications, good afternoon. As we reach out for input on this plan, we have identified three primary target audiences. You, the school board, parents and community in the same group as we use some of the same methods to reach, and employees. And in looking at those target audiences, we've outlined the communications methods we can use to reach each group. Ms. Gittens, as you mentioned, the community group meetings are in the parents and community target audience and that will include some of our stakeholders that initially helped us with our community feedback groups when we first did this a year and a half ago or so. As we're doing this, we want to ensure that we're reaching as many of our stakeholders as possible. So on this slide, you can see the various communication tools that we plan to use, such as the district's digital video and social media tools, our local media, and community meetings and events. And events include some of the back-to-school events that we're doing as well as local community meetings that are already scheduled and ones that we will host on our own. In addition to our traditional methods, we do have a small marketing budget for this project that will allow us to do some paid media, which will help with our outreach efforts in both engaging the community and the development of the plan, but also in notifying them later throughout the year on important enrollment dates. And of course, as with every communication effort, we want to ensure that we're reaching our audiences. So in this slide, we've outlined some of the methods and tools that have measurable outcomes. So on the screen, you can see some of those, which include a focus group survey, social media, et cetera. And all of those methods do give us a way to be able to see if the information is being received as well as some of those give us the opportunity to receive the feedback.
So this is a condensed timeline. I think benefiting the district and their efforts, though, will be the, you know, the community engagement that was done, you know, roughly for about a year in 2020, 2021. So really gathering input August to September, developing, you know, our draft approach, using feedback to finalize the draft, presenting to the board in November, refining the plan from November really to December, and then presenting that first reading. The first official reading, reviewing policy changes, providing an opportunity for public comment. And then the first of January 2023, presenting the second reading, okay? Obtaining board approval and then, you know, really getting going for the, for the 23, 24 school year. Adjusting enrollment accordingly to meet those needs. So I do, you know, our team recognizes that this is a condensed timeline, but we are hoping by going back out with some of the information and telling this, telling the story again, that we'll be able to pick up kind of where we left off. In terms of the start date, one of the big considerations for staff has been configuring focus. You know, coding the processes, getting the new zone information and training student enrollment staff. You can see from going back to May to March, focus has been, you know, a huge system change for us and making sure that that's aligned with any changes in student enrollment. You can see the information campaign from January to March, really developing materials and targeting parents and community, conducting that open enrollment campaign in January 23, targeting families of incoming kindergarteners and conducting a multimedia blitz. Cindy's, Cindy's words, not mine, the blitz. Assigning students to schools in March of 2023, informing families of their school placement based on residential address, conducting the lottery process in March for students who wish to choose a different school opposed to their residential, residentially assigned school, and then beginning the school year in August 2023 with new assignment plan in place. So that is our condensed timeline, our plan moving forward.
Okay, now, go ahead.
Thank you, Adam, and team. Just a quick comment from me, if you could go back to slide 16. Just, this is an important slide because if you remember the post-it note idea from our current policy to the most egregious one, the goal would be to land somewhere in between and these would be the topics of conversation to engage the community in. So which zones do you prefer? Do you prefer starting with our current zones, adopting Davis demographics? Do you think there's another or better way? We don't have the answers to those questions. We have to go out to the community to solicit their responses in order to receive them. What level of transportation should be divided, should be decided? Do we transfer, if you go to that zone school you live across the street from, clearly you can walk. But then do we say we're going to transport all of our remaining choice? Or do we say there's a level of proximity and beyond that, you can still go to that school, but you're going to have to drive yourself? Some other large school districts have made this decision when they remove transportation per se from their magnet programs because they could no longer afford to do so. So again, do we want to have a conversation? We want to engage and have a deeper conversation with the community around what level of transportation needs to be provided? Because 2,145 students a day being late to school is not a metric we want to continue to utilize. And I can't tell you, Roger talks about cutting routes. I think sometimes we want to use the word collapsing routes. He's trying to find sort of extra special ways to combine a route so that all the kids potentially can be serviced by the drivers we have. But we have to look beyond that. The last one, and this may be the third rail of all of this, I just want to give you one last thing to think about before turning it over to all of you. Which students currently would be grandfathered? So if we did this only for elementary and we grandfathered every elementary school student that currently has their choice, it would be six years before we would receive any type of relief from our current system. So you'll notice that we've talked about both elementary and engaging middle school. We believe our high schools are in their whole different class. So we're not even going into the high school world unless the board makes the suggestion that we ought to today. But we are looking at middle schools and high schools regarding proximity plan. But I just want you to be aware that if we grandfathered everybody in, it would take us six years to even make any time of movement on that 5% of the general fund. And that's the last point I would like to make. On-time percentage is greater than anything else, but that 5% of the monies coming out of general fund are monies we could and should be spending back in our schools for the education of our children. Roger needs it in order to deal with all the choice and all the options that we give our people. So I would turn it over to the board, back to the chair for the board members' comments.
And thank you for that, a little recap there, that was good. Ms. Gittens, then Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, two questions. One, and I've talked many times about how we distribute information and how we contact our community. So I can talk to you later about that. But one of the things I think we need to look at and reasons why parents choose one school over another or say, no, I'm holding on to this school because it's a good school. I almost think we need to start like on the other end of it and figuring out how can we market our schools better? And the thing that's going to help us is the fact of going to more progress monitoring than just, you know, this school's an A, this school's a B, because that's all they see. And if we focused perhaps a little bit more on, you know, a school that's not an A, maybe it's a C, but those, the gains and explaining and helping people understand this is a good school for your child because kids grow and learn at this school. It may not be an A or B school, but kids grow and learn expeditiously and go on to do, you know, great educational things. So to me, that's, that's a nugget that will help us get rid of the blinders and the mindset, I got to be in an A school. Somebody says, oh, no, that's a C school. But who are they working with? You know, do they have a plethora of students that have to grow and not just, you know, already threes, fours, and fives? And especially in the East Zone, that's going to be a selling point to get parents to change that paradigm.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I have two kind of different things. The first thing fairly quickly, Dr. Bernier, you said six years, but with the grandfathering. But if we attach siblings and you have a big family, it could be almost forever. I mean, is that, so the six, the six years would be saying, but, you know, okay, oldest child, you can be here, but your younger brother, two years behind you, is going to have to.
Again, another point of communication with the community, not just grandfathering, but something referred to as a sibling preference.
Right, right.
I think it's, I think it's the balance of between the post-it note on the right and the post-it note on the left, how far right or left. And you can take transportation in one direction and take student enrollment in another. It doesn't say everything has to move to the right or left. I want to take those three categories, the schools, the buses, and the kids. Those are three aspects that could move in opposite directions from each other. Well, one could stay put, I guess that would be the only way. But they can move independently of each other. And sibling transfer or sibling, sibling enrollment is another area that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, and I'm going to guess that that's going to be huge because what parent's going to want to run around to two or three different elementary schools? But the other thing, and I'm looking at the timeline. As you well know, we've been discussing proximity for a couple of years. And I know this conversation has happened. It's something that I brought up almost right from the start. And I'd like to know if there's any progress on building equity of programs and especially the before and after school care. Because, and I believe Dr. Savage said that when they, he and his wife were looking at school choices for their twins, that that's something that they looked at. choices for their twins, that that's something that they looked at. And I know that there are some elementary schools that might have, you know, it might be some parents that go to work very early, and that might have before school, but not after, or both, or neither one, and that is going to be huge. That, to me, is a huge reason for parents to choose one school or another, and heaven forbid that we should continue with that old, I'm going to pick the school farthest away so my kid doesn't need daycare and can be riding on the bus for an hour and a half or more. And also kind of with that piggybacking with what Ms. Gittens said, it's like, schools, you know, you're right, people look, it's a C, it's a B, whatever, you know? But all schools have their special things. And I think that if we, as we market our different schools, we should look at some of those special things. For instance, you know, we have, besides Franklin Park, isn't there another one that's a community school with wraparound services?
For Myers.
Okay, I couldn't remember which one it is. I mean, to me, that would be hugely important to a lot of parents, that wow, I'm looking at this school, and maybe it's not ideal, but this is wonderful, the wraparound services, and, I mean, there's so many, and maybe some of them that have really huge ELL populations, they might offer, didn't TICE or some, what's it, the dual language classes? I don't even know, are those still offered?
I think so.
Where they, yeah, so, you know, there are some real specialties at some of our schools that on the surface, if all you look at is a letter, an A, B, or a C, you're just looking with blinders on, and I have the feeling that a lot of parents will be attracted to some of those special things that schools have.
So Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Gittens, since you both have asked a question, so aside from some of the schools asking for a marketing budget to market their schools, during this Thursday's nuts and bolts meeting with the principals, we actually put together a short presentation, the communications team, to give them some tips on how to market their school and how they can help us market their school as well, because as you very well know, we have a lot of schools, so it'd be very challenging for the district communications staff to do it on our own, so we're going to try to work with them so we can work together to tell each and every school's story.
But if I may, it goes well beyond marketing the schools. This is something on the timeline that I'm hoping, although I'm not real optimistic on this, that this was started a year ago or more, that the schools were already looking at this. Because if we're looking, with all the things we have to do to start this school year, if we're looking at that now, and we're going to start marketing and having these focus groups and all in January, which is around the corner, these things have to be in place. It's not like, oh, yeah, we needed something to market our school, so we're going to do this, we're going to have clowns on Thursdays, or whatever. But you understand what I'm saying? So I'm asking, has there been movement in the schools to develop something special and/or especially the before-after school programs, which I know were suggested on more than one occasion? I'm having the feeling that hasn't happened.
On those notes, let's talk about a couple of things. One is the marketing of a school building is incredibly important. I have enjoyed my time with principals, specifically one-on-ones over the last several weeks, and especially on Friday, meeting three principals who understand the need to market their school buildings. And then, like in any community, once you're in a school building, you love the school building you're in. Somebody from across town may look at it as a C-rated school, but as a parent of a C-rated school where my daughter attended, I loved that school for what it provided to her. And there were a lot of factors in that school grade, but the culture of that school building was right, and that's a measure that you don't see often in a school grade. So taking that aspect, we will continue to market, but let's be clear, we're coming off a two-year pandemic where schools were no longer interested in marketing themselves. I think they were, I just don't think they had any time to do it. We are, however, running out of time in this schedule, and I want to make sure that we're clear, this community engagement schedule following this board meeting will begin in earnest this month and into the fall. This would be part of my use of my entry plan time to engage with staff and engage with teachers and engage with principals and community members surrounding a topic like this, because we've got to do something different. Or we're going to face the situation that my two grandsons face in Kentucky, when they have what's referred to as a yellowout for two weeks during the school year, and it repeats that cycle about every eight. They don't have bus transportation. And in the case of my grandchildren, they have a community and a set of family members that can get them in a car and get them to school. But there are other children who go to school with them that cannot. We are, if we continue down this process, we are going to be facing some of those very difficult decisions from this dais about how we provide transportation to our children.
I think, Dr. Lloyd?
Just to address, Ms. Vaughn was talking about before and after care. On our website, it has a list of those that have before and after care, and I think when school development tallied it last year, there was maybe just one or two that did not have before and after care. But one thing that I think that a residential address first, choice second does, it addresses what Ms. Gittens and Ms. Vaughn are actually getting at, is over and under-selected schools, or perception versus reality. And we cannot be, as a school district, in the business of operating with good, bad, over, under. They should be the same. And I think that this will dramatically address some of the perception issues that we have. Because remember, what they're trying to magnetize, they're trying to magnetize in their entire subzone, what this would allow us to do is to allow the community in the school to join, to really develop what they want in that school, because it would be their school, right? And we haven't had that in a very long time, and even in the 90s, it was forced under the court order. Now we would actually be creating it, and you would have an opportunity for the community in the school to be one, and to develop their programming and their needs and their wants together. So that just kind of addressed that. I call it kind of like the public's conversation, well, what did you select? Or, what did you select? Oh, I didn't select this school because of this, when in all actuality, it doesn't match, you know, reality. It's just a perception talk of parents that think they know what's happening, because they're putting one choice against another. And it's very difficult, I think, for us as a district to operate that way, because we're having to leverage such heavy resources to balance out a perception that is not actually true. And, you know, that's just something that this could address as a secondary.
You know, you had, I'm going to come back to you, Ms. Gittens, let me have, go ahead, Ms. Javonelli.
So if I may, through the chair, Dr. Bernier, what role does bus driver play in our bus driver shortage? And let me just say, I think I've heard that we are pretty good in terms of hourly wage compared to the state.
We are, great question. We are in good place regarding what we're paying per hour in comparison to other school districts. At one point, we were high as number two, then Santa Rosa settled its contract. The last time I had an update from Mr. Lloyd, we were at number three in terms of the general hourly wage. But we still have more work to do, because we have, while we have, like in our teacher ranks, while we have raised the starting, we've not dealt with the compression of our people who are more experienced. Roger's certainly closer to the issue, and could speak very directly on the anecdotal knowledge that he has on how often people mention what they get paid as to why they leave.
Pay is a big deal, and just last week, Orange County actually bumped their drivers up to $19.98. They leapfrogged everybody. So everybody is struggling trying to hire bus drivers, and pay is definitely an issue. But the reality is, is our competition is not a bus driver from Collier County or from Charlotte County. That's not our competition. We're losing them to Waste Management, we're losing Port Authority, we're losing them to Lee Tran, to different places, for a number of reasons, but pay is a big one. You have to remember, we only pay 180 days a year, and we have a split shift. So although some of these companies pay a little bit less than us, it's full-time employment. So they're getting paid through Christmas break, through the summer break, but if you talk to the drivers, pay is a big deal. It absolutely is. And Dr. Bernier's correct, we went to 1,750, which was a great step. I will tell you on my backend, my more senior drivers, they do have an issue. I've been here 13 years, and now I only make 60 cents more than the person who you're hiring today. So the compression is an issue with us, but pay obviously would help, and definitely would help.
Thank you. I love that this is only addressing elementary and middle. I love keeping a robust choice system for our high school kids. I can say that one of mine in my home would not go to school if it wasn't for his ability to have welding and auto mechanic, and that is not available in the school closest to my home. So I think that the choice in high school is really important to maintain for now. How do we, another question for Dr. Bernier, if I may, how do we avoid resegregating our schools? It's my understanding that if you look at where people live in Lee County, there's a significant amount of segregation, not on the basis of race, but by race and ethnicity. And so if we're going to move to our proximity plan, how do we avoid resegregation, number one? Number two, how do we avoid having all of our ones and twos in one school and all of our fives in another school? Because I don't think that's what's best for kids, right?
Lottery systems are part of that solution, but let's begin with the reality of our current state as a school district. This plan, as we currently operate, has not separated ones and twos from fours and fives. I mean, it hasn't integrated them into one mesh. Our schools, as they're currently being assigned, some of them have a predominant population of 100% free and reduced lunch, and over 60% of their students scoring in the ones and two levels, and that's with all the choice. Additionally, we have school buildings in our inner core that are primarily African-American or primarily Hispanic. We have some even on our outside perimeters that are predominantly Hispanic as well. So the current system we have is not really dealing with the demographic issues. There's an aspect, and there is a person who is on a notice of a potential retainer if we move forward with this, her name is Marie Snead. She is the premier civil rights attorney in the state and in the nation regarding helping school districts come out from under their desegregation order. Without realizing it, she was a part of Lee County's process to come out from their de-seg order. She was involved in Orange County Public Schools, and most recently, she was in Las Vegas working with our lottery system there, which was just awarded by Magnet Schools of America as the premier lottery to look at when looking for those types of issues of placing children with test scores and in creating diversity in its enrollment. The critical factor in those lotteries is a randomization aspect, that some people get assigned based upon merit, and some people get assigned solely based upon a random selection. The random selection over time will create a better balance. But it is a topic of conversation for this committee as we go out into the world and into our greater Lee community family, to have that conversation about expectations and how we can continue to make good on the court order that this district has worked so hard to get out from underneath.
Thank you. I've got three more points if I could. I think the timeline is too condensed. I think that it's going to require a significant amount of political will by the board to make these difficult decisions. I believe that if you had said to me when my daughter was in fifth grade that my two boys could not continue at Pinewood's Elementary School, I would have voted every school board member out, and I would have voted for an elected superintendent. Because it's not just about the school grade, it's about my experience in that school. And don't tell my mother I said this, but I believe Leslie Gunderson, that principal, made me a better mother, like more so than my own mom did, right? Why? Because I love that school so much, and I trusted her, and when they're your babies, you want to know that your babies are going to be taken care of. I think there's an emotional element to this that has not been addressed, and I'm sure it's been addressed by staff, but I fear that there could be some confusion with voters where there's a crossover between, I don't like that this superintendent is leading this, and over here I have this choice to have an elected superintendent who will do what I want. Do you understand what I'm saying? I fear that there will be a crossover in the minds of voters, and this could drive some decisions on ballots in November. So I just, I want that to be out there. And the next thing is means testing for students, I'm hoping that that is an option. If we are taking transportation away from magnet programs, for example, we might be taking transportation away from students who need it most. You know, if I can afford to drive my kids to that magnet program, then I shouldn't be provided transportation. But if I'm a parent of a kid who has an incredibly gifted arts student, for example, but I can't afford to drive that kid to that arts program, I'd like to see us be able to provide that transportation for that kid that needs it the most. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but I also think it comes back down to the question that Ms. Vaughn was asking about making sure our schools have comparable programs. Having faced that process with a child who wanted to go to the premier performing arts magnet, there was no humanly way that I could get him to and from. But his high school that he was at had a fantastic arts program in and of itself. So I think there's about equity in the offerings from school to school to school. We also talked about before and after school care, making sure that's available, and I didn't get a chance to say it, but I think it's really important that the board knows I've already started to engage with Stars, Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA's, really having a conversation in depth with them about how they can come to help make those before and after school programs even more robust and more of a reality. But I think means testing is something that we'll certainly carry away from this particular meeting as another option. We've had the discussions, but we'll find a way to make sure that it's included as we look forward, and then work with a lottery system that could potentially either deal with means, or then a transportation system that could, and to what extent? What if the means is from Benita Springs to North Fort Myers, right? That might be a means that is too large for us to handle, but the next closest performing arts system or arts program could potentially be an area. Again, I think it's really great to have these conversations together, because it makes it clear to all of you that we as a committee and me as a superintendent, we don't have all the answers to this. We need to go out to our community and find out what they're thinking and what might be amenable, and maybe if it's only one Post-it note from the one on the far right, it doesn't have to be in the middle, maybe it's one Post-it note closer that gets Roger 69 routes back. That would be helpful. But my concern with timing is if we delay it, 23, 24, I will tell you, whoever is sitting at this dais will have huge responsibilities to its constituents, because I don't believe forecasting being the fact short of us losing enrollment and finding, you know, a shipwrecked set of drivers who just happened upon our shores, we're going to have significant issues transporting our students in 23, 24, the likes of which this district has never seen, if current trends hold.
Okay, I appreciate what you said about the equity in programming. I'm talking more at the middle school level than the elementary level. I agree. Elementarys are essentially the same in terms of academic offerings and all that, but we do have some Centers of Excellence in our middle schools that I would hate to deny to a student because of a parent's inability to pay for transportation. Finally, 12.9 million to 20 million savings per year, that's the first time I've heard any real numbers. I think that's an essential element in public messaging. As we go through these various scenarios with regard to grandfathering, how much will we save with each? That will be a big driver in my decision-making, and I think it will make the tough decisions more palatable to the community if we can attach a dollar amount, and maybe, you know, for each million saved, how much more is that for teachers' pay? How much more, how many more pairs can we hire? You know, like attach an actual impact on students to that dollar amount. I think that that will help the public understand the gravity of that savings or the impact of that savings. Those are my comments. Thank you.
We specifically downplayed dollars, because we wanted to really focus on this being an instructional decision, but there is... But there is, there is an opportunity to become more efficient as a system, which would help then drive additional capital, not just for teacher salaries, but for all staff or particularly in the area of insurance. Or, remember, compensation is, we're going to talk about that one in a few minutes too, I believe. Compensation is about a three-legged stool, right? The first stool is making sure that all of our academic programming and the dollars to support that are the very best we can deliver. The other aspect is about a compensation package, and that is not always about what you get paid per hour or what you take home. There are other fringes in our program that are important to families and to individuals, like health insurance as an example. And then the final leg of that three-legged stool is having enough money in reserves to deal with unfortunate things that can occur. So I agree with you that there is the potential to move from the 64th least efficient district in the state, moving to 50 still doesn't win us an award for being the best transportation system, but there are significant dollars that can be then rerouted. And again, a great point to issue again to the community, we're using general fund dollars. Transportation is not a categorical from the state. So it's not like transportation has its own budget. We take from the same money that pays a teacher, a custodian, a school bus driver buys textbooks. We use that same money to drive our buses. And I think that's an excellent point.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier. Ms. Giovinelli, please.
Thank you. First of all, Ms. Ralph, thank you so much for you and your staff and everything that you do, because I send you a lot of messages and somehow you seem to work it out. It may take a little time and they're, you know, the parents are patient, but I don't know how you do it, a magic wand or something. So I just want to thank you for that. Because I don't think you failed yet, for me anyway. So that's, for me, you're zero and, I mean, you're just, you rock it. So thank you. But, question, this is for transportation, job sharing. I know I brought this up before, but I mean, there's like, how about cross-training with paras, utilizing, and this may be part-time, but you know, some shift work with, you know, even FedEx, UPS, Lee Tran, you know, Pepsi, Coke. They all have drivers, and I don't know if we could use them part-time, if we've got thought out of the box to utilize any of them, even if it's just for, you know, one day a week or part-time. Like I said, that's a question, I don't know that we've been able to access that.
They have. They're called substitute drivers. So they're able to drive with us. They do not get benefits. We do have sub-drivers. We just don't have regular. So we have drivers that are retirees that say, "Look, I only want to work on the mornings. I only want to work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday." We do have, we've had EMT drivers that'll come in on their day off. So that's set up in the system now. As far as the Spalk employees, we've been trying to get that now for 18 months, two years, trying to get that through. It is a contractual Spalk bargaining issue there because we have a number of our drivers that are working at schools, security specialists, paraprofessionals, that absolutely could help us. We could also train the food and service people, and I know Mr. Dotick and his group are working diligently to try to get that done as soon as possible. So we're hoping, because obviously that helps us tremendously if we can get that. So that's been in the works for a while, and I believe, and I don't want to put them on the spot, but I believe we are closer to that at this point.
That would be awesome, because I think, I know the paras would like more money, and even if it's working a little bit extra. So, thank you. Everybody knows I'm a realtor. So when we sell a house, people want to know, I mean, they just want to be near a school. And they don't care what, they're not asking if it's A, B, C, D. Some do research, I know Ms. Patrica did, but not everybody does. They would just want to be close and convenient to the school. Not every realtor tells their buyer that just because I'm selling you a house in Tanglewood that you're going to get Tanglewood Elementary. It happens to be a rude awakening for some people because they find that out on enrollment day, you know, when they realize they didn't get the school, or when they, you know, get the letter in the mail that they didn't get the school, their number-one school, where they live within walking distance. So I think it's important that we utilize the realtor community because I think they're going to tell you, rip the Band-Aid off, let's do it. Because at the end of the day, the sooner, people come from up north, that's how it's done there. So it's not uncommon. We're the uncommon thing. We're the unique situation. So it comes from better understanding. Actually, trying to convince them of the choice and that they've picked this school and then they didn't get it is harder to explain than what we're trying to do, if that makes sense. So, you know, it's, I think if we engage the realtor community, you're going to have that backing. I have friends, and I'm not going to say what year, in 1881, that I graduated, but when I graduated, I had friends that went to four different elementary schools and their parents did it because a new school was built, or they moved, or, you know, or it's just the school, the school zones changed and it wasn't zones back then. But you knew what school you were going to go to. Unless your parent drove you to a different school, like my parents drove me to Orange River. I went to Orange River. And I lived, at that time, tights, but they were buying a home down. So it was a long story, but people do what they got to do if they want their child in that school. And I think that it can work out, but I think we have to pull the Band-Aid off, in my opinion. But I think people will get on board because it's, what you're trying to do is more, is like, kind of normal. And we're not. And so I think it's just getting our community and parents involved, and there could be some grandfathering. I think that what school enrollment does is, you know, they take each situation and scrutinize that and do the best for that family. And I don't think that will change. I think that they're going to do that and they're going to continue to do that. So that's, you know, my opinion, and it was, one of the questions was, I wrote down early on, you know, what is the savings? Because, and doing it sooner than later, because we can't, as Dr. Bernier just said, we can't wait. So I'm looking forward to your continued work on this project and us as a board, all, you know, working together to move this baby down the road, and like I said, sooner than better. So thank you for your work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, did you have any?
Well, I can't add to what my colleagues have said because they've covered it all along with Dr. Bernier. But I do agree that, you know, communication with the community is crucial. The childcare issue is huge. You know, when you walk into a school, you can tell right away what's happening there. And so the culture and the atmosphere of the school and the front office and the way the kids are walking and, you know, acting tells it all. And I think that people, like Mrs. Giovinelli said, they'll adapt and they'll do what they have. And we have a very liberal choice system in this community. Some people who move in say they can't believe that we transport all these kids.
Yes.
And that they see buses with not that many kids in there. So I think that the proximity plan and the work you've done is critical and valuable. And again, Ms. Ralph, thank you because I know, you know, whenever I hear from a constituent, you somehow solved the problem. Mr. Lloyd, I don't envy you a bit. And I really think that the work that you've done so far is admirable and I appreciate it. And whatever I can do to help, please let me know. Thank you.
Ms. Kittens?
Yes, a couple of questions. Earlier on, there was discussion about marketing budgets for the schools to help market themselves. And I know that if they're Title I or one of the titles, whatever, that they can use some of the money to do that. Are we, though, as a district, providing any money to help schools that don't have that to promote themselves? And you can get back to me if you don't have the answer now, but I'd kind of like to know if it's not a Title I school, how are they supposed to do that?
We'd have to get back to you, Ms. Kittens. I'm not aware of all the different avenues a school would have to be able to market itself.
I know that some of them have those funds and they can get billboards and do all of this kind of stuff. Okay, the second one is, you know, we talk a lot about the schools that have a plethora of Level Ones and Twos. And I wanted to make a statement about that because it's not always a bad thing. I have talked to administrators and teachers at some of the schools, especially in the East Zone, that have 80, 90% Level Ones and Twos. And the staff that they have and the team that they have are ecstatic in working with those students. They are, it's their thing to see kids grow and to move. There are other teachers and staff that, you know, like the threes, fours, and fives because, you know, they're there. They kind of, you know, do their own and help themselves. But there are other educators that love the fact of being able to see that Johnny came in and couldn't read, you know, this, and now he can read up to this level. So I say that to say, we also need to support those schools and those teachers and administrators that are doing the job that we have to have done and that they love to do. But that's where the equity and resources comes in. And I think it's going to be cheaper for us in the long run to support these schools and to give the teachers the stipends and the travel expense to come all the way from the Cape to do a job they love. I mean, I've had teachers in tears that say, you know, "I can't do Lehigh anymore. I can't afford it." So if we had something to help them, they want to be there. Those are the children they want to serve. So we need to meet them where they're at. It's going to be cheaper for us as a district because, think about it, we're not trying to figure out how we're going to move all these Level Ones and Twos that live in this neighborhood and proximity, how are we going to get them somewhere else? Why don't we look at where they're at and meet them where they're at? Just because they are Level Ones and Twos and maybe Threes, it's not that they just want to be bused somewhere else. They want to be in their neighborhood as well, because they can walk to school, they've got before and after programs, all the things that they want. But we just have to make it workable for them to stay in their communities and to be educated like everyone else and take care of our teachers. So I'll get off the stand, but I have...
We're just going over 15 minutes. We have one more thing to go over.
Okay. I'm not quite finished. And everyone got to give all of the things that they had to say.
I just wanted to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to speak. That's why I had called on the other ladies. But go ahead, please, Ms. Kittens.
Okay. My last thing is, you were talking about housing and realtors and all of that. And I don't want to offend anybody. Everybody's job and growth and development of a county and the city is very important. But how do we get developers to understand, to sell, you know, when they're selling their properties and their latest but greatest development, and you guys, you know, the realtors are coming and trying to sell them, and what is one of the things that they use? The shopping, the schools, the work, all of those things. And we are a part of their sales pitch. And I don't know how we can work with them or figure some way, because it gets back to what Ms. Giovinelli was saying and what I've said about like the Innovation School and these different schools we're doing. People buy a home expecting, because they're told, you know, "In three years, you're going to have this right across the street." And then all of a sudden, you guys are telling, Ms. Ralph is having to pull her hair out and say, "No, you can't go there." So how do we, how do we find a balance in that? Yes, people want to move into an area where there's good schools and good education and all of that, but it kind of goes back to what I was saying before and what you were saying about marketing. We need to market that all of our schools are good, for whatever purpose. They all have a purpose to fit different children, and all of our 96, 97,000 children are different, and there's a school for them.
Well, I really appreciate each and every one of you, and I thank you for what you do. This was a great presentation, and I'm looking forward to moving forward. So thank you.
I actually have a question. And I'm just going to, you don't have to answer. Legacy, will that be involved in that at all, the legacy? And I know, this came up as a recommendation from whom? Somebody from one of the advisories? I don't remember which. The legacy?
CSI.
I don't know what they called it.
CSI.
Thank you. Legacy something.
Legacy preference.
Preference, thank you.
It was high school, for high school.
Oh, just for high school?
Yes.
Okay. Well, oh yeah, maybe it was just for high school, so it wouldn't affect you. Never mind then. Thank you. Have a great day. Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for reminding me that. I just couldn't remember.
No, it's like, high school.
Yeah, that's, okay.
So next we have, on the agenda is the Creating Competitive Compensation Employee Benefits. And we have Mr. Dotick and Ms. Bonnie McFarland. And thank you all who have been sitting here patiently with us all day. Appreciate that.
Chair, there's no reason why Mr. Dotick and Ms. McFarland can get started as soon as they want to. Just wanted to thank them in advance for this presentation. They are continuing that dialogue regarding employer contribution to medical insurance and potentially providing us a heads-up. As you know, we deal in interest-based bargaining. It would not surprise any individual seated here or in the audience that this particular issue might come up both for our Spalk and our Talc employees. So I'll turn it over to our team.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier. Good afternoon. Ms. McFarland and I are here today to discuss the current state of our employer-provided health insurance and our next steps with regard to that subject matter. With that, I'll turn it over to the expert here today, Ms. McFarland, our Director of Insurance and Benefits. Bonnie?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for your time today. Dr. Bernier kind of stole my first slide, which is why we're here today, to provide a level of awareness to the board regarding our current employer contribution and because we do anticipate this being part of our upcoming bargaining sessions.
Perfect, thank you.
So I just wanted to start, insurance is kind of a complicated thing, lots of pieces to it. I know people who say, "Oh, it makes my head hurt." So we're going to talk for just a quick moment, not about insurance, but about buying a car. So if you're going to the market to buy a car and Sally is approved for a $22,000 loan and Johnny is approved for an $8,000 loan, and they both go to the market to buy a $23,000 car, then Sally's going to have to come up with $1,000 more than her loan amount to purchase that car. And Johnny's going to have to come up with $15,000 above his loan amount to purchase that car. And those loan amounts and the employer contributions are synonymous. So when employees are trying to buy insurance, their employer gives them a certain amount of money to buy that insurance with. And any money that is above the amount given by the employer, the employee pays out of their paycheck in the form of an insurance premium deduction. So the challenge that we face right now is that Lee Schools has one of the lowest premiums among governmental entities. It's the lowest premium right now among our peer groups. But our employer contribution is also the lowest. And so what that results in is the perception that our insurance is expensive because the deduction amount from the employee is higher than our competitive governmental entities. So it's important to understand those different pieces and how they go into making the plan as a whole work. So by way of comparison, this graph, it's in alphabetical order, so Lee Schools is second from the right. And you can see how we compare in terms of our employer contribution. So what are we giving folks in terms of dollars to... So what are we giving folks in terms of dollars to purchase insurance with? A couple of things here. The first is that we're the only local governmental entity that doesn't provide a different amount if you select family coverage. So you get the same amount whether you select employee-only coverage or if you select to cover any type of a dependent. And you can also see our number here is significantly lower than our other competitors, both at the employee-only level and certainly at the family level. But as you all know, different governmental entities are funded differently. They have different funding sources, et cetera. So how do we compare to other school districts who are funded similarly to us? So again, this chart is other Florida school districts, alphabetical order, left to right. Lee Schools is in the middle there. And you can see it's more common within school districts to have a single level of funding, although we do have two of our peer districts who have two levels of funding. And the other thing I want to point out here is the next, the next closest entity on this slide is Broward County at 89,000. We're at 81, I'm sorry, 8,900. We're at 8,100, thank you. Which is an $800 per person difference. But here's, here's the hurdle that that creates. Because we have over 10,000 people on our plan, every $100 of difference in an individual contribution is $1 million of cost to the district. So if we were just to match Broward County, that's an $800 difference, that would be an $8 million expense on behalf of the district. So even though these numbers may look close, when you start looking at them in total, the numbers get a lot bigger.
Eight hundred, $800 will be 800,000, not a million. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Sorry for the sidebar. So I know we've talked about several of these things, and this is a very slide that probably makes your eyes hurt, but you don't have to read all of it. Basically, what I'm saying here is that we've done a lot of things on the plan management side of the house to keep down the cost of premiums. We've also done a lot of things on the wellness side of the house to improve the health of our employees so that they utilize less healthcare. And those things continue to be ongoing and you can see just under there the various different things we've done over time. So with the plan design changes, we know we've begun to exhaust those opportunities for a few reasons. The federal healthcare law, commonly called Obamacare, also known as PPACA, it has a minimum value, it's called a minimum essential benefits, that have to be a part of a plan. So there's a certain threshold that you cannot go below in terms of providing benefits to employees. And if you do, you enact what they have termed the nuclear penalty. It's a multi-thousand-dollar-per-person penalty that you just get to pay the government, which doesn't help our students or our employees or our children. We've also reached a point where very large plan design changes are now necessary to receive modest reductions in premium. We continue to work in the area of cost containment and on the premium side, and we continue to evaluate new opportunities as they become available. But those opportunities are becoming less available and becoming more challenging to meet the financial obligations of the plan. So in healthcare, you have something called medical trend. It's sort of similar to inflation, except it is unique only to the cost increases that are contained within medical insurance. And in 2007, we as a district froze our board contribution at the time at 6372. And as you can see, the bottom line on this graph is the board contribution. It stayed at 6372 for nine years before it began inching up. During that time, the cost of medical care continued to rise. So while in, you know, '07, '08, '09, we're not very far off in the terms of how far we've gotten from the cost of the medical care. You can see as we go out to the right, that gap has continued to grow as medical trend continues to increase at a greater rate than our employee contribution. So we have some challenges. The first is, it isn't 100% about price, right? We want the best benefit for the best price. The analogy I love with this is the most expensive thing you run in your house is your air conditioning. If you just turned it off, your bill would go down by 50%, except most of us would want to live here without our air conditioning, right? So that's not an option. So it's kind of the same thing, right? It's not just about the price, it's also about the benefits. So it's striking that balance between the two. Medical trend is a headwind that we are constantly facing. It ranges between about 5% and 9% annually. And so every year, the benefits that we offer become 5% to 9% more expensive, depending on the year that we're in. There's been discussion around increasing benefits for employees and doing things like funding towards dependents. That would require a significant increase to funds. As I mentioned earlier, we don't currently do a separate funding for folks who cover dependents. And as I said earlier, each $100 per person in increase in annual funding is approximately $1 million in cost to the district. I call that Bonnie math. Your finance people will give you all the ones with all the decimals, but as a rule of thumb, that's a great kind of number. Let's make it this, and you can just do quick math and say every $100 is $1 million of cost to the district as a whole. So next steps, we are going to have an insurance task force meeting this Thursday. We're going to be discussing our insurance health plan for the 2324 plan year. That plan year does start on April 1st, but as you all know, we begin ramping up for the new year in November and December with all of our programmatic changes in PeopleSoft, all of our mailers out to our retirees and our COBRA participants. And then January, we start full force with our employees, with our open enrollment campaign. So we don't have a lot of time between now and when we need to begin marketing those programs. We do anticipate that insurance funding will be part of the FY2324 bargaining process. The funding that goes towards the health plan is actually contained in Article 11.02 of both the Spalk and the Talc contracts. So that's where the funding itself actually resides in those contracts. We do have a medical insurance ITN, which is an invitation to negotiate, which is another fancy word for we're putting it out to bid, for spring of 2023 with an anticipated bid award in the late summer to early fall of 2024, I mean, 2023 for a 2024 implementation date. And we do need to continue evaluating the employer contribution with the goal of maintaining competitive benefits package. And that's all I have prepared for you, Superintendent and Board.
There's the Board. I have no comments. I think Bonnie and Rob's presentation speaks for itself. We're interested in hearing your discussion.
Thank you. Questions, please?
So I am always just so impressed by your level of knowledge of this stuff, and that's illustrated by your ability to break it down in a way that I can understand it. Because insurance, seriously, is one of the more complicated areas of an employee's benefit package. My question is, are we not here partially because of the negotiations surrounding this? Meaning, the union has always preferred a pay raise to an increase in premiums paid by the district? That's not why we're here?
I'll let you take it.
Bonnie can certainly chime in. That has historically been the way it has been presented at bargaining, yes. And I obviously left the district in 2019. I can't speak during the time I wasn't here. But yes, the employer contribution has been something that we have always negotiated. The period of time that it was frozen, I can't really speak to today in the sense that whether that was negotiated or the parties just agreed to not talk about the board contribution at that time, I really can't remember how that all took place, honestly. But I think that's what's gotten us behind. Because we have talked about it in the last several years, with the exception, actually, of this past bargaining, because it had been raised the previous year. So, yeah, it takes two to tango, and obviously, it's something that's bargained, is health insurance. So the simple answer to your question is yes.
So that is my concern, and maybe it's not a question that I can ask in the sunshine, but what are we going to do to make this interesting in the interest-based bargaining process to our unions?
Well, I think part of that step is something we've done here today, which is to make the Board aware and others aware. And I think the union, or the unions, I should say, who are part of the insurance task force are intimately aware of the situation we have ourselves in. I can confidently say that.
And then my last question is, are we, and it probably doesn't matter all that much because we already, we don't give more for a family plan, but do we require our employees' spouses to seek insurance if they can get it elsewhere? Meaning, if insurance is provided by my husband's company, he cannot get it through us? Is that how our plan is structured?
No, ma'am. Our plan does not have that restriction in it. However, I believe your, the first part of your comment was, is the answer, which is it's cost-effective for most people to put a spouse on the plan. And when they do, it's usually because they don't have that option. Most employers pay a substantial amount towards their employees' insurance, their individual employees' insurance. So if you have two folks that are married and they both work for companies that offer insurance, it's likely cheaper for them both to be insured on their own.
All right, those are my questions, comments. Thank you. Ms. Giovinelli, then Ms. Fisher, please.
And to piggyback off of what Ms. Petrika just mentioned, so do we encourage employees to go on the husband's plan or given incentive or something like that? Because that would, I think, save us money. I'm on my husband's insurance. I don't take the insurance. And I was, one of the questions I have was Slide 5, because you really don't explain, like, my husband falls under the Lee government with the Port Authority and the 21960, like, that line for family funding, what does that, does that mean that's what they contribute?
So that's what the Lee County government, so by your husband adding you to his insurance, if he were to be on that plan by himself, Lee County government would contribute $13,908 to that plan. But because he's added you as a dependent, he's now getting $21,930, $21,960 towards insurance for both of you.
Right.
So he's getting more of an employer contribution because you're on the plan with him at the county.
Right. And not only that, the way they have it set up is that any of our children, which my daughter's on it, so we get the benefit of all three of us, you know, all three of us for, I think, 300 bucks a month or something. It's very reasonable. And that's-
Right. And that's back to this math, where you see this total insurance premium minus the employer contribution. That $300 you're talking about is that insurance premium deducted from the employee's check.
Correct.
But the reason it's only $300 is because the button right next to it, which is the employer contribution amount, is almost 21,000 a year. And so that makes, that's how you end up with that employee premium being so low because that employer premium is so high. Their insurance is no cheaper, ours is actually a little cheaper, but we're very competitive at the total premium level, where the difference lies is on the right side of that math formula. How much is the employer contributing and how much is the employee contributing? If you and your husband were on our plan, you'd be getting $8,104.80. The two of you being on the county plan, you get, whatever that number was, 22, 23?
21.
21,900.
Eight sixty.
Yeah. So that's where, that's why the end result, which is what comes out of the check, is so much different.
Right. Thank you.
What would she be paying, though?
A lot more.
A lot more, yeah.
Yeah. That's why I'm on, I mean, that's why I'm on his plan. It actually saves us here. I mean, there's no point in not leaving, just leaving it the way it is.
So I just have a couple of why questions. Why have we not gradually increased over the years?
One of my sayings and my union friends would attest that benefits is a term and condition of employment subject to collective bargaining. And so insurance has been a bargain item. So prior to 2007, we did not designate a flat dollar amount. We had a very different philosophy around the insurance, which was that the district paid for the most expensive plan at the employee-only level, and employees could buy a less expensive plan if they wanted one. That philosophy changed from saying, "We're going to pay," and then what happened then, let me kind of finish that story so you understand. What happened is as the rates went up, so did the cost of the most expensive plan and so did what the district paid. So all those things were going up, 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 up. We all remember what happened in '07, '08, '09, you know, bottom fell out, tax dollars fell through the floor, et cetera. And so that's when they negotiated, "Okay, we're going to just freeze the board contribution at this amount." At the time, employees were able to buy the exact same thing they were the year before with that amount of money. And then when we flipped the way that we contribute and we said, "No, we're just going to do this flat dollar," then through the bargaining process, that did not keep up over time.
So with the cost of living and the cost of everything else increasing gradually and us not keeping up with that, we're in the position we're in now. I don't know, I mean, it blows my mind that we don't provide more for family coverage because that's, some people just work for the coverage.
Yes.
And it's hard for me to understand that we don't have money to invest in our people when we're losing people. We have a shortage of employees and people are leaving us for county government and for the university and other jobs because they can afford it. So if we don't have the money to increase our employer contribution, why not? And I recently met with someone from finance about all the unfilled positions that we have, where the money was not paid out in salary. Where's that money? Well, it's back in the general fund and some of it's in reserves. And I know reserves are for a rainy day, and if this isn't a rainy day, I don't know that I've ever seen one. So I'm just kind of being the devil's advocate and posing some of these questions, like, why don't we just take the bull by the horn and say, "We're going to provide more money for benefits?" Because people are saying, "Oh, well, we just got, you know, a 3% raise, but then we got an increase in our medical premiums." So you're giving it to us with one hand and taking it with another, and we're behind the eight ball. And rents are going up and cost of housing is going up and food and all that. I mean, this is why we're losing people. And I feel like there has to be a way for us to look at our resources and do better.
Simply respond and say, "I thank you for those rhetorical questions." Ms. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Dodik.
Ms. Petrika and then Ms. Gittens.
And if I could provide you with an out-loud answer to that rhetorical question, I think it's because the county controls the millage rate and we do not. Number one. Number two, we've been bargained into this position. So if the Board takes a strong stand and says, "We're, this is the pot of money we have to increase benefits, to increase compensation packages for employees next year." The Board takes the stand and says, "A larger piece is going to go to medical insurance." That impacts bargaining, right? But the other, the other piece is when our county commissioners come out and say, "We didn't raise your taxes because we didn't increase your millage rate," they still get the benefit of all that increase in housing value. So they're getting more money each year, even though they're not raising our millage. We don't have the opportunity to do that because of the rollback. So that's your answer.
And we do have the opportunity to go for the half-mill that we willingly gave up in 2007, 2008, but we don't do it because of maybe-
Well, that was capital. That wasn't, that wasn't operating. The half-mill we gave up was capital, not operating. And this is all operating dollars. I hear what you're saying about the 1.0 mill to go toward operating and going out to the public and asking them for that. I hear that.
Right.
And that's a different discussion.
And that's why we have finally got the sales tax, you know, which was a difficult thing to have happen because people were afraid to do it. But look at the benefit. And the voters weren't afraid to say yes, 64% of them. I mean, I just think that we have to take a look. We can't keep doing the same thing.
It was like squeaker. It was 64.
Right, thank you.
It was 64.
Maybe it was in the west zone. It was not that way in the north.
Ms. Gittens, please.
I agree definitely with the first part that Ms. Fisher was saying. And when Ms. McFarland came to the Finance Committee, and they were very impressed as well with her presentation, and she does break it down, she's a good teacher to break it down so everyone can understand. One of the questions that came up was reserves. So why are we holding on to them? We don't have enough bus drivers. We don't have enough-
holding on to them? We don't have enough bus drivers. We don't have enough, you know, we're struggling with teachers and all of this. Oh, it's wonderful for us to sit here and say, we want to keep our reserves at this level. And yeah, we have it, and we have our A rating and all of that. But we may have our A rating and no one to do the work. So where do we balance, I guess I'm into the balance thing today. Where does one equal the other one? And I forget what percentage we had agreed on a few months ago to keep our reserves at this point. But just like I said, the Finance Committee asks the same questions. Why are we keeping such high reserves in a time that we need to spend? You know, it's like, you don't have anywhere to live because you can't afford the rent, but you've got a savings account. So when are you going to tap into it? And I get with the millage rate and all of that, but all that stuff takes time. All that stuff takes, you know, legislation so we can get it on the ballot, then we got to vote, we got to do, we have the reserves. Why can't we use, and I would like to see some type of a comparison or numbers of saying, if we used this much of the reserves, how would it affect these items over here? I'd just like to see that comparison. 1% or 2% of the reserves, would it get us out of some of the trouble that we're in right now?
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
When it comes to reserves, I'm really happy that the budget presentations are worth coming to all of you. I know Amy and Kelly and the entire Budget and Finance Department worked very hard to get ready to balance this particular budget. And I think that's the first thing that, for the public's consideration, the first thing we have to understand is we have to put forth a balanced budget every year. So we can't deficit spend. The other aspect regarding reserves, and I will let Kelly and Amy handle these questions when we have the budgetary presentations, there are some statutory requirements for a certain level of funding. So the question becomes, what's above that statutory level? And that's a question worth us, worth asking and getting an answer for. But finally, I would caution us that, remember, reserves are not a recurring, they're not recurring dollars. So if we were to take X number of dollars out of the reserves, and it would solve the insurance situation for a year, we are then going to be in a deficit spend after that year is over, where we would have to find a way to make up for that in the general funding. So I think they're excellent questions, but I think we have to look at is some additional questions when we go into the budgetary processes in the next several weeks and into the early fall.
And if I may, may I? It's almost like with the ESAR funds. I mean, we've got all of this money to quote-unquote "help us" through this time, but it's not ongoing either. So, you know, we could be facing a real challenge in a couple of years. When the ESAR funds are no longer there, and, you know, things are quote-unquote, I don't even know what normal is anymore, what are we getting back to? Because we're never going to get back to where we were before COVID.
Well, I can assure you, those questions are being asked right now in regular ESAR meetings as to when those funds end.
What do we do?
What do we do? Who's on a grant-funded position? Whose position will end when ESAR funding ends? You know, there's lots of conversation ongoing now. So I don't think your question, your question is a great question. I just want to make sure that for the public, they understand that there are some statutory requirements for reserves, and we need to be careful
Right.
about spending anything that's a recurring expense by using our reserve money.
Right. And I understand that. And that was part of the question, I mean, the conversation. We did talk about reserves, what was required and what we wanted to do. And I believe we went above what was required. But even like with the ESAR funds, let's say, for example, in some of the schools, there were funds to hire certain people to do jobs, and there was nobody to hire. So what did we do with that money? I mean, where is it? Did we use it somewhere else, or what? Because...
Yes, ma'am. To answer your question, yes, ma'am, you have.
Okay.
You've used it in things like employee bonuses, retention bonuses. You've added it into an administrative retention. You added it into a substitute pool of dollars that were available to help with class coverage. So there has been a reorganization of the spend, all of that coming forward to all of you to approve. There will be another round of that this fall, as we look to the amount of dollars in ESAR, whether we can meet the employment expectations, and if we can't, how can we use those dollars in a non-recurring way, but also in line with how they were granted to us from the federal government?
Awesome. Thank you very much.
And that was all contingent on knowing, I mean, just knowing that those money, it's not going to just keep coming to us. Question?
So just to address the public's perception surrounding this, it might be a useful exercise. How long would it take us if we used reserves to become Hillsborough? Right? No, I'm being serious. If we're, if the suggestion is using reserves for recurring expenses,
And not all.
that's what Hillsborough did. And that's why they were almost in a state receivership. So...
There are two examples in state history regarding districts getting involved in their reserve funding for recurring finances. One, most recently, is Hillborough, but prior to that, were the county that's escaping me at the moment, down in the Keys.
Monroe.
Monroe County. They got into a situation as well where they were spending non-recurring funds, and they had to do a clawback on salaries. Really come back and reduce people's salaries in order to get through that. So, but I think it's, I think it's of value. I think one of the questions I've taken away is the conversation with Amy and Kelly, to be prepared for some of these questions, and with some real-life examples of if we were to take a look at the balances above the reserves, what would it pay for, and where would it stop?
And that was, may I say, that was what I was getting at. In no way, shape, or form was I talking about depleting our reserves. That was not on the radar. I'm looking at, what can we do, which is why I asked you to, on paper, show us, if we use this amount, what does it do? And we may look at those two things and go, eh, no, we're not going to do it. But unless we look at it, we have no idea if it wouldn't help us out. So...
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Are there any other comments or questions for this presentation? Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. CNN, we're moving on to Good to the Order. Ms. Morgan, do you have anything for Good to the Order?
I do not.
Ms. Vaughn, do you have anything for Good to the Order?
Not.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens, do you have anything for this Good to the Order?
No.
Okay. Ms. Petrika, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Ms. Javonelli, Ms. Fisher?
Thank you.
I have none. Ms. Dupree Bruno?
I have none. Thank you.
And Dr. B.
I'm the bad guy. I have two.
That's it. Out of here.
There are two quick ones. One is from the previous work session. I just wanted to make sure that there was a question regarding extra time in order to deal with the Civil Rights and Equity Guide. We went ahead and made the shift in the schedule. Naviance will be done as a voiceover, recorded video for all of you, rather than doing a white paper. You'll be able to click on a link and listen to the presentation that would have been provided to you. Also, they are going to go one step further and try to answer after each slide if they can, maybe some questions that they anticipated from you as board members. We will have to recycle that presentation for the public, though, maybe not the whole presentation, but a true briefing, the briefing on the 16th, because that's when Naviance contract will come before you for a vote. So just want you to be aware of that. The other was that we have some big appointments coming tomorrow, and a lot of people planning to be in the boardroom if, I almost said trustees again. If board members have any questions or concerns about any of the appointments, if you could please make sure I would be aware of those, because I want to be aware and make the individuals seated in the audience aware if there was going to be any sense of concern. And you can talk to me about those privately. Other than that, thank you for your time and interest in some of the things we covered today. It's a lot.
Thank you for bringing that up, because I was going to mention that. So thank you for that. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.